Here.
Commissioner who?
Here.
Mr. Jowdy?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Kovacs?
Here.
Commissioner Loyola?
Here.
Mr. Tierney is currently absent. Alternate Mr. Haas, your alternate Commissioner Roybets?
Here.
And alternate Commissioner Palma is unable to make it this evening for work-related reasons. And I am Commissioner Lohr. The next regular meeting is scheduled for June 12th, 2012. It is my understanding that we do have one or two items for that agenda. So as of right now, we can plan on the meeting that night. If you would please stand for pledge and Commissioner Oz.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, the United Republic, the equal stands, and my nation and my God, the individual, the liberty, and the justice of all.
We do have a set of minutes or a series of minutes to accept this evening from March 13th, 2012, March 27th, 2012, and April 10th, 2012. There is one minor clarification on the March 13th minutes which I talked to the Secretary about regarding, actually ironically, the vote of acceptance for the minutes. So I would like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes with a minor clerical modification regarding a vote given.
Who made that motion?
Made by Commissioner Haddad, seconded by Commissioner Estefan. Discussion, further discussion, changes, by the acceptance of minutes. For the record, that is where all three sets were at. All those in favor, signature everything "aye." Are opposed? Motion carries. Our first venue of business is the public hearing. Seven thirty PM, this is the petition of Terren AILO, Nine Woodlock Street, lot number I-15234. Change of zone from RA8 to R3. Commissioner Estefan, if you would please read the legal notice. Commissioner Haddad, if you would read the planning commissioner recommendation. And then I will read the statement.
Notice is hereby given that the zoning commission of the City of Danbury will hold a public hearing commencing at seven thirty PM on May 27th, 2012, in the council chambers on the third floor of City Hall. One fifty-five Deer Hill Avenue, consider the following matter. Petition of Terren AILO, Nine Woodlock Street, lot number I-15234, for change of zone from RA8 to R3. Parties in interest and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time. Robert C. Lohr, Chairman of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I have the planning commissioner recommendation here on March 8th, 2012, to Robert C. Lohr, Chairman of Danbury's zoning commission, from Arnold E. Finelli Jr., Chairman of Danbury Planning Commission, regarding a three-year referral petition of Terren AILO, Nine Woodlock Street, I-15234, for change of zone from RA8 to R3. At the regular meeting held on May 16th, 2012, the City of Danbury Planning Commission voted to give the above referenced petition a negative recommendation for the following reasons. This does not comply with the Plan of Conservation and Development. There is no compelling reason to change the zone, and this will only create another kind of noncompliance. Rezoning is not the appropriate method to bring this non- to bring nonconforming uses into compliance. The motion to give a negative recommendation was made by Mr. Uriah, seconded by Ms. Hofstetter and Cassie D'Amis.
The City of Danbury setting a zoning department date of May 15th, 2012, to the City of Danbury Planning Commission, City of Danbury Zoning Commission, from Dennis I. L., referencing petition of Terren AILO, Nine Woodlock Street, tax accessory act, number I-15234, proposing zoning RA8 to R3. We have received a petition from Terren AILO to amend the zoning map by rezoning Nine Woodlock Street from RA8 to R3. The lot has an area of thirteen thousand two hundred seventy-one square feet. Under R3 zoning, it appears the lot area would only be sufficient to meet the minimum for one, two, or three family dwellings, but would be insufficient for any other use allowed. The reasons why the petition should be granted were stated by the applicant in the following verbatim transcript. The subject's property currently- the subject property's current use is a nonconforming two-family in the RA8 zone. The subject property is solely sandwiched between the RA8 Deer Hill Overlay Zone and the R3 Zone. It clearly does not belong in the Deer Hill Overlay Zone because according to the residential zoning regulations, four A7B1 refers to that zone encompassing lots RA8 which have roadfront to Deer Hill Avenue. This leaves the bordering R3 Zone, which is the zone that all the other properties on Woodlock Street are in. Also, including the R3 Zone and properties east of Deer Hill Avenue between Worcester and Seeley and west of Green. In accordance with Regulation 9A in ten, it seems only fit to change the zone to R3 Zone, making it formal. We note that Nine Woodlock Street, though zoned RA8, is not within the Deer Hill Overlay Zone. The parcel butts four lots zoned RA8 and one lot zoned R3. Background: The current use of this site is a two-family dwelling and consequently may remain as a nonconforming use. However, the owner attempted to convert a separate garage building into a residence, but was stopped in December 2010 when a court ordered found that such would be a violation of the regulations. A number of conditions were attached to be ordered to restore the garage to its previous use. We have noticed that the requirement to replace or restore the garage doors has yet to be complied with. Plan of Conservation and Development: The land use plan- the land development plan map of the PCD recommends of Nine Woodlock Street be used for single-family development. Consequently, the requested rezoning is not in compliance with the PCD. In addition, the proposed rezoning would conflict with the following policy recommendation in Section 2, Urban Forward District Plan of the PCD. Rezoned areas in the urban forward to be compatible with the Plan of Conservation and Development map. A rezoning to R3 would do the opposite. Section 10I3, Zone Change Criteria. We find that the request conflicts with the following criteria specified in Section 10I3 of the regulations. General criteria: We do not find that all the- all the uses allowed in R3 are fully compatible with those of the RA8 zoning district or the budding Deer Hill Avenue Overlay Zone. Specific criteria: Under specific criteria for mixed residential districts, the parcel is on a local street, i.e. Woodlock. The criteria suggests that the site can be easily accessible to collector or arterial streets and highways. Other considerations: This lot currently contains a two-family dwelling protected as a nonconforming use in the RA8 zoning district. A nonconforming use is one that may have conformed to the regulations at one time, but now does not. However, the regulations cannot and do not require that use be changed to conform with the current regulations. It has been suggested that a rezoning of the lot to R3 would meet the intent of provisions of the regulations to bring nonconforming uses into compliance. This is not the case, or it does not suggest that rezoning is required for bringing nonconformities into compliance. If this parcel were a conforming use under RA8 zoning, it would only have one dwelling unit, but as a nonconforming use, it is allowed to continue as a two-family dwelling. However, it appears that the owner watches more than two units. If it is his intention to resume previous efforts to convert a separate garage into a dwelling unit, that effort would fail even if the rezoning were granted. The R3 zoning district is not allowed for two residential buildings on the lot. It specifically states that only one, two-family, or three-family dwelling is permitted per lot. Consequently, the rezoning is granted- consequently, the rezoning, if granted, could only allow for the conversion of the existing two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling. The separate garage could not be converted into a dwelling to gain an additional dwelling unit on the lot. There are other problems as well relating to lot widths and setbacks. The required minimum lot width for a three-family dwelling in R3 is 100 feet. The existing lot has frontage of only 71.82 feet. Moreover, the required minimum side yard setback is 15 feet. One of the existing side yards, however, is only 11.9 feet. Consequently, in neither case is the lot compliant for construction or conversion to a three-family dwelling in R3. Conclusion: The rezoning request raises several issues. One, it does not comply with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Two, R3 zoning to allow for a third dwelling unit is not compatible with four budding lots zoned RA8, and the existing lot size of thirteen thousand two hundred seventy-one square feet fails to meet the minimums required for all other R3 uses except dwellings. Three, the parcel is not located on a collector or arterial street. And four, the lot fails to meet the required minimum lot frontage or a minimum side yard setback for a three-family dwelling in R3. Consequently, we recommend denial of this petition for the reasons stated above. We note in closing that use of the garage as a separate dwelling unit, if contemplated, is not permitted under R3. Do anybody here wishing to speak in favor of the petition?
Good evening.
One last. Just let the ref reflect. I'm going to speak to Commissioner Roybets and Commissioner Tierney. I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is David Grogans. I'm an attorney with an office at 158 Deer Hill Avenue. Feel a little bit of a little bit of injury here tonight. I'm here, of course, to speak on behalf of the application. And unfortunately, while I have the highest regard for Mr. Alpern, I must disagree with the letter of recommendation which he wrote. I would like to go through that and just again to some preliminary background information. I've got a couple of- I don't have enough for everybody in the commission, but perhaps you can pass them around if they have. Some blowups of the parcel colored in pink here. And-
We have it colored in yellow.
You have it colored in yellow. And-
Will be this right here?
Yes. Oh, that's great. We have that. And you can see that the parcel itself is an island virtually in the middle of an R3 Zone and the Deer Hill Overlay Zone to which I think reference was made in the report. It does not belong. It's kind of an anomaly zoning law, isn't it? And a classic example of not good, well-thought-out planning as a single RA lot with all the other zones around it. One of the primary reasons why it wants to change the zone. But getting back to the letter, and I'd like to kind of take it point by point because I think it's important to go through these. There are a couple of references in the background to the garage structure on the property. And in fact, there is a court order ordering that the property be restored back to a garage. My client has in fact attempted to comply with the order, and I have a copy of the building permit issued by the City of Danbury, which I would offer. And this was issued at the time of the court order. And approximately a month after the building permit was issued, a very unfortunate incident occurred at the site. One of the occupants of the dwelling attempted to commit suicide by running his vehicle through the garage. He did succeed in running through the garage. Fortunately, he succeeded in killing himself. But it made a significant mess of the garage. And my client has been attempting for quite some time to recover from the insurance company so that he can repair and bring the garage back to its state as a garage and rectify the situation. It's a very expensive proposition. He's received some of the proceeds that he's hoping to receive and intends to in fact restore the building to a garage. Has no intention of making the building into a third residence on the site. The next point which is raised is the- with some degree of credibility to the planning commission, the failure of the property to- and its proposal to conform with the Plan of Conservation and Development. And I don't want to minimize that, but I think it needs to be put in proper context. And I'm just quoting you from Fuller on what the significance of the Plan of Conservation and Development is. And he indicates that it should act as a recommendation for future development in the municipality. It is not the same as the comprehensive plan. And I guess my main point is it's not required to be complied with. It is merely a recommendation for future development of a site. The comprehensive plan, on the other hand, and I don't want these points to be confused, but the comprehensive plan is in fact required to be complied with. The comprehensive plan essentially is made up of rezoning regulations and rezoning map. And that issue is addressed here. And I don't think there's an issue of failure to comply with the comprehensive plan. It's merely a failure to comply with the PCD, which is again a recommendation only. So I think that's an important point to keep in mind. On the other hand, there is a concept that goes along with the comprehensive plan, and it is to not force a property to become- that is not conforming, which is again what this is. It's a nonconforming use by it being a two-family house in a RA8, which is a single-family zone essentially. But while it isn't to force or cause or require a change of zone to comply, there is a intention and a policy, a strong policy with regard to the comprehensive plan that nonconformities be reduced if they can be. And that's really what this application would do. It would take the house which has a two-family house is a nonconforming use, which is a significant issue, and bring it into conformity as a two-family dwelling. And again, getting back to the letter that we talked about before, my client has no intention to make this into a three-family dwelling. It's not the purpose of this application. There's nothing in the application which makes any reference to that. And it is not the purpose while we are here. So the Plan of Conservation and Development and the failure of the application to perhaps conform completely to it should not be a cause to deny the application. And specifically is no more compelling. And in fact, I think the compelling issue now is to reduce the nonconformity, which is really the goal of the application. The next issue which is raised in the letter is the statement that the- that the property and the uses in the R3 Zone are not necessarily compatible with the uses in the RA8 Zone. But looking at the zoning ordinance, which I think is important here, if you look at the RA8 Zone on page 41 of the ordinance, it says that there are four uses listed. Church and other places of worship, nursery, kindergarten, elementary, secondary school, one-family dwelling, and park, playground, or recreational facility. Now, going to the R3 Zone, we start with eight uses. Church or other place of worship, that's the same.
You're on page-
I'm on page 425.
Sorry, let's go over.
No. Firehouse, which is certainly not relevant on a 13,000-square-foot block. Nursery or kindergarten, that's the same as the RA8 Zone. One-family dwelling, that's the same as the RA8 Zone. Park or playground is exactly the same. And a police station, and I think that's highly unlikely again on a 13,000-square-foot block. And then you've got the two- and three-family dwellings. So I can't see that that is entirely not compatible. And I have to take issue with the statement on that point in the letter. There's also a statement that it's not- the parcel is not on a collector's street. Well, in the subdivision regulations, I believe it's on page 25, it lists Deer Hill Avenue as a collector's street. And this property is no more than 100 feet off of Deer Hill Avenue. So its access to a collector's street is certainly viable. So again, here we have a piece of land which is clearly, I think, meant to be in the R3 Zone. I don't know how it was possibly left out. It just doesn't make any sense at all. It's absolutely spot zoning, the way it exists now. And if you discount the issue of whether or not my client wants to add a third dwelling, which is not part of the application, and I don't think you can consider it. And you look at the parcel as it exists and the requirements of the comprehensive plan, which I referenced, and the recommendations of the Plan of Conservation and Development. I think despite the fact that the zoning commission- the planning commission came with a negative recommendation and despite of Mr. Alpern's analysis, I must take strong disagreement with its conclusion and say that this property cries out to be in the R3 Zone. I can't understand why it never got there. It just doesn't make any sense to put an island of property in the middle of- like this in the middle of the R3 Zone. It would be much more compatible. So that being the case, I would urge you, despite the strong recommendations to the contrary, to reconsider that and to change the zone and bring it into- I mean, you're talking about the use of the zone. That's the essence of zoning. And to bring that into conformity by allowing a two-family zoning- a two-family residence to be there with- as a permitted use would be, I believe, a proper and thoughtful zoning. I ask you to consider that.
Do we have any questions?
We've got to me what the intent is. What's the purpose of changing the zone?
Well, the purpose is to bring it into conformity. I mean, I, you know, once you have the zone, the use change, any, I mean, when you're a nonconforming lot, yes, it can exist. But anytime you want to make any changes to the use or whatever, you have to get a variance. It's a burden on the owner that- and in this case, by taking care of everything but the width issue, I think it would reduce that burden on the owner.
Right, but if the zone was changed, then you would still have the width issue.
You'd still have the width issue, but that wouldn't be the same as the use issue. I mean, it says you shouldn't get a- the rule seems to be, again, looking at the cases, that if there is a change in use, there shouldn't be a variance granted to allow that. But once you rectify the use issue, which is what this would do, then all you've got is a side- is a yard issue or yard conformity, which is standard for allowing variances for. So it does provide a little bit of relief to the owner of a parcel to have a conforming use as opposed to a nonconforming use. That's what he's asking.
And are there any changes that he's looking to implement now?
No, no. He's- he purchased the house from the city. He's renovating the house. It's occupied as section eight housing. And he intends to keep it and maintain it that way.
Commissioner Kovacs?
Maybe more of a question for the commission here, but how many nonconforming uses do we currently have in Danbury? How much of a burden is this to one homeowner? I mean, is this like ink in the ocean? Or is this, you know, I mean, this happens all the time, right? Where people who aren't going to make any changes live in a nonconforming parcel of land, and then they go about their day, and there is no reason to change it, right? Asking the wrong question or?
No, I don't think you're asking the wrong question. I'm trying to answer thinking, I don't know if we can speculate as to how many nonconforming lots or, I mean, my house is a nonconforming lot. It's too small. The lot that my house is located on. I knew that when I, when we purchased it, we knew that. And it's a single-family home. That's one. I don't know if we can speculate how many is.
So, okay, where I'm going with this is that the intent is to be noble and make this conforming for Danbury, right? However, there are tons of these things out there. So I guess I'm glossed on why you want to make, you know, why you're-
It's not to be noble. I don't want to mislead you. There's no nobility to this. I think it's right, it's correct zoning. But it's a, it can be a burden on the owner if they have- I mean, if nonconforming uses exist, that's fine. But anytime you want to go in and get a zoning permit which leads to a building permit, you're going to have a problem because you've got to get a variance. And that's a burden.
Right, sure, sure. So then what I'm kind of hearing here is that there is some intent to make a change or something.
Well, I don't, I don't know. But at least we can look toward the future and say, this clears up a major hurdle to doing anything.
Okay. Any additional questions? Commissioner Haddad?
Attorney Grogans and Commissioner Kovacs, we would have someone, I've been here for a while, so- we would have someone approach us to try and bring a nonconforming piece of property into conformity, and then would perhaps come in and say, I have a commercial building, I'm having difficulty in getting financing. Sometimes lenders don't want to lend on a nonconforming piece of property. But Attorney Grogans, your client purchased a property in a 2010 from the City of Danbury, clearly knew the zone that it was in, clearly knew what they were hiding, had no trouble getting financing. So even if this got granted, it would still be nonconforming in some issues.
Just on the side, on the width?
But it still would be nonconforming. So we wouldn't be solving- to approve this tonight would be solving, would not be removing the nonconforming issue. Okay, so whether-
But the major portion of it. It's much more difficult, I believe, and because of zoning commission, because of all the issues, to get a use variance than it is to get a side yard or front yard variance.
Anyway, that's the issue.
Okay. Any additional questions? I have- I have a couple of questions. First of all, you know, you touched on the idea of spot zoning. Does, and I'm curious as to how you think this applies to spot zoning with that and the fact that this is a zone, RA zone, and it butts RA zone, it's a large RA zoning area. My understanding of spot zoning would be this little piece with RA, with zone RA, and everything else with R3 or R4 or IG8, then it would be spot zoning. But I don't see how, I just wondered if you could understand further how it would be spot zoning.
I think you have to look at the letter itself. There's a distinction, a clear difference. There's a distinction between the Deer Hill Overlay Zone, which is our, you can't look at it as just our. The Deer Hill Overlay Zone has its own characteristics. And it was clear, and I think was made clear in the recommendation, that there's a distinction. And so if you look at that as, there must be characteristics. And I don't know all the characteristics of the Deer Hill Overlay Zone except for the- the properties are all bordering on Deer Hill. But it is not the same zone. And the R3, which is all over the place, if you look on the back, there are all those properties that are off of Deer Hill at R3. How does it get up as not being R3? It doesn't make sense to me. It belongs in an R3.
Mr. Chairman, can I trust that?
I was thinking the same thing.
Then wouldn't this property owner have the same argument? And then this one, and then this one, and then this one, and this one? I mean, to simply say, how did it become that? It's because it's on another street. And this is on-
They're all connected.
But Deer Hill Avenue, this is on-
Woodlock.
Woodlock, okay. And this is on Deer Hill.
Yeah.
So, you know, this property owner, this property owner, this property owner, they can all come in with your argument. And then when-
But they're on the street.
When does this, oh, I follow what I'm saying. I meant in another circumstance, the adjoiningers in that matter, from a legal standpoint, I don't see this spot zoning. From looking at a house, looking at a house, looking at a house, where there were no zoning boundaries, I could understand you saying, wait a minute, this is a two-family, and one next to it in the R3 Zone is a single-family. But to say spot zoning from a legal sense of the word or phrase, I think that's a stretch.
I just, physically, when you look at it, it just looks like spot zoning.
My next question, I have a question regarding a building permit that you gave us a copy of, and Attorney Haddad pointed out to me as well as one I know of, that this building permit expired at 11:30, 2011. So I'm curious, one, if there's an existing building permit that's been extended for this?
It was extended. My client actually gave information, clearly, it was extended.
Is this 49401?
It was extended, but it was not able to clear up the issue of the- It was extended, but he, it was not able to clear up the issue of the, yeah, yeah, I mean, so, I mean, he intends, I think he intends to finish that garage up in terms of getting the garage doors back and whatever, now that he's, he's received some of the proceeds from the insurance of the, well, he had a claim against his own insurance company, and then he's claimed also against the driver, and they're fighting that somehow, but there was a criminal charge, and the person who ran into the garage was charged and found dead.
But that doesn't have anything to do with technically putting the garage back together in place.
No, but there's a, the amount of money that cost, that the cost of repair was a pretty heavy, the damages, it's over $40,000 worth of damage. It's a lot more than that.
He had the money to turn it from not a garage into an apartment illegally, but he didn't, doesn't have the money to turn it back into a garage?
I can say he doesn't have the money, it just said he was waiting to get a thing rectified. He had to be appraised, it was part of litigation, just trying to recover what he thought was good.
My purpose for answering, as we have mentioned, we have shown, mentioned is to show the, my, I think, the way I should go with the intent is to, I'm curious as to how is this continuing with the expiration?
Well, I mean, his intent is to do what he's required to do, which is to turn it back into a garage, and that building permit, same as that.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Anybody else here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Before I ask, oh, I am, I apologize, I have one further question, Mr. Kovacs. And I overlooked it, I truly apologize, when I noticed it. On the warranty deed which you supplied, there, the terms and conditions, you gave a schedule A, but you also, it's also notes that the, that this property is set by the terms and conditions according to the Affordable Land Use Restriction Agreement dated May 11th. Are you aware of any restrictions in that agreement, which would deal with this zone change application?
I'm not.
Would it be possible to obtain a copy of that, just so we can use that?
Sure, but I can't do it though tonight, I don't think I have that, that, no, I don't have it. But I would be glad to get it.
I would like to request that.
I'd be glad.
Thank you. Does anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody against this petition?
Sir, before, let me just remind the chairman, if there is a letter of opposition, you may want to read this at the ready.
Thank you, Mr. Kovacs. We have received a letter of opposition, this is to Mr. Malillo and the members of the zoning commission. My husband and I are unable to attend tonight's meeting, but would like to voice our concerns about the possible zoning change to 9 Whitlock Street. We live at 97 Deer Hill Avenue, and our property backs up to 9 Whitlock Street, we're strongly against the zoning change proposed. We moved to Deer Hill Avenue six years ago because we love the street and its historical value. We hope the city of Danbury will support us in preserving our street and our quality of life. Thank you, Walter and Lori Orgera. And this was received May 22nd, 2012, and stamped in by the Planning and Zoning of the City of Danbury. So with that...
Thank you. My name is Jean-Hasim Ba, I live at 98 Deer Hill Avenue. I hardly know where to begin, there's just, just so much that they presented. First of all, it seems like just from the beginning, this property was purchased, and I think there may be some in- restrictions because it was bought, I don't know from the city, but I think it's actually bought from Hutt, because I believe it's really not the city's own property, but the housing authorities, housing authority, which works with Hutt, so, maybe that's a clarification of the city property. Secondly, the present owner illegally converted a garage into an apartment, never saw a permit, which may be in violation of his own purchase agreement, purchasing property, because I think he has a 30-year in restriction. That itself is pretty scary, because he took no permits out, he just had a total disregard for safety, for the rules of the city of Danbury, and I think the building codes are there for the purpose of purely safety, I really believe so. So he turned a dilapidated garage into an apartment. He created his own problem, now is blaming the insurance company and somebody else for his problem and his cost, again, a total disregard to the city and everyone else. Secondly, getting to this gentleman's question, I believe, and I've been in real estate for 54 years, virtually almost every single parcel in Danbury is non-conforming, because it's been upzoned, changed and zoning, and people live with that. And the purpose of that is, yes, for them to come to the city of Danbury and apply for a variance, and in some cases, they're granted, there are good reasons. That's what they want them to do. The city knew what they're doing, the zoning department knew what they're doing, the planning commission realized what they were doing. And again, I don't want to deliver this whole thing too far, but about five years ago, the city of Danbury and the planning commission corrected probably a problem that occurred for over 40 years, and that is converting these beautiful single-family homes into two-family, three-family, and four-family, which at the time, they felt was the right thing to do, but over time realized it burdened the streets, the parking situation, safety issues, just a horrendous situation that it created, that what we personally have as a team, is a whole tremendous amount of effort trying to go after folks who are doing things illegally, yet we still end with all that effort and all that goodwill, and it worked very well to reduce that kind of building. Someone comes in, has absolutely no regard, knew what the rules were, and just went and said, what the heck, I'm just going to go in and maybe nobody will know I'm converting this into an illegal apartment. Then, not only that, if you granted this, obviously the intent is to go to the board of the ZBA and to try to get them to waive the 100-foot requirement for a three-family so they can create a three-family. Why else would you do it? Otherwise, you'd have 20,000 people doing the same thing. There's, there's good reason why the zoning commission should not permit this. Don't possess look on Deer Hill Avenue, because there was tremendous effort five years ago to create a situation where, for health, safety, planning, and a thousand other reasons, why we no longer want an overburdened property with too many units. There are ways to do it, there are some ways to do it now, and the plan that was put into place five years ago is a very good one. It's long overdue, but we're there, and the city's much better for it, and therefore, I would, I would request that the commission reject the petition. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
Sure.
Mr. Kovacs.
Excuse me, Mr. Ba, I, when I got, when I got a copy of the petition, I made a note of something, and then actually, the chairman brought up, we requested a copy of the Affordable Land Use Restriction Agreement, and, I'm sorry?
It's called Alora. You call it the Alora?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Alora. I thought that was the woman on Star Trek, Alora. Anyway, and, and I'm curious about that, just like you are. It may say that the property must be owner-occupied to purchase the property, and the purchase agreement may say that you can't come to zoning, you can't increase the density and things like that. So we are going to read you that.
Thank you.
Or we've requested it to be presented.
Additional questions, Mr. Ba? Anybody else wishing to speak against this petition?
Hi, my name's Charles Volbel, I live at 99 Deer Hill Avenue, and my backyard, what's the petition's backyard, just here to go on record is saying I hope that you deny the petition. Certainly have concerns about potential quality of life, issues that could be presented down the road. Not well-versed on land use, zoning requirements and the such, but I have a lot of practical experience, I'm living downtown Danbury, born and raised on McDermott Street, which is a couple of blocks up from Main Street, and it was a beautiful street growing up, all two-family houses there. In fact, my grandmother, who lived downstairs, always used to say it was called Little Deer Hill Avenue. But then somewhere in the 70s, 80s, they started to convert the two-families into three-families. And I was only a kid at the time, but I started to see these structures growing up, and I, I knew at the time that I didn't think any good was going to come of it. And sadly, you know, if you go into that neighborhood now, we had, my family ended up selling our homestead, and I still go to church in the neighborhood, Sacred Heart there, and breaks my heart, driving down, even Town Hill at the time when I was a kid was very nice. I go up Stillman, I go down Stone Street, and the character of all those neighborhoods had been destroyed. So, you know, I just hope that the city did have the thoughtfulness to add the historic overlay, and I hope this is kind of a little buffer to that, and I hope it's respected when you make your decision. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Malillo? Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against this petition? Anybody else in opposition to this petition? Anybody else in opposition to this petition? Dr. Kovacs?
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Let me begin by just making a comment on Mr. Swobel's contention that there are no conforming lots in Danbury, that's not true. I don't have a number back in my form, there are, but I know my property conforms, so there must be more. Okay. This whole issue of the garage, I think, in a way, is kind of confusing the issue. I brought it up in my report, because I wanted to advise the applicant of limitations on the use of that property, even if it were rezoned to R3, he couldn't, he still couldn't use that garage as a subject of law, according to regulations. That's, that's a weird problem. It was stated that the parcel is an island that is sandwiched between the Deer Hill Overlay Zone and R3, that's not good planning, and that's why it should be rezoned. Well, it's not an island, it's zone R88, as it's budding, or it's budding 5, budding properties, or it's on R88. It's not an island, it's Alora. In fact, the Deer Hill Overlay, pardon me, because, see, I don't have time to read these comments before the meeting, so I have to sort of sit here and extemporaneously respond to them. Deer Hill Avenue Overlay Zone is restricted to parcels that are above Deer Hill Avenue, and that's why this one is not included. There are many more on the other side of Deer Hill Avenue that are along Garfield, which are also zone R88, which are not in the Deer Hill Avenue Overlay Zone. And that's why we simply restricted it to only two properties that, that border on Deer Hill Avenue. And it wasn't that this was carved out, anything of that nature. And I want to make a point that because 9 Whitlock is not in the overlay zone, it enjoys a greater range of uses than those that are in the Deer Hill Avenue Overlay Zone, that's more restrictive than what's allowed in typically in R88. So not only does he have a non-conforming use, which allows him to have two units instead of just one, but also does, there's a lot of other things that can be done in terms of setbacks in the area and so on, that, not area, uses and so on, that are not allowed on properties that are open to overlay zone. My favorite topic, the plan of conservation and development. Zoning, he said, is not required to comply with plan of conservation and development? That's certainly true. Plan of conservation and development is a guide, and I think it's a big guide, because what else do you have to guide you in your decisions? All you have are personal desires of over 20,000 property owners in Danbury. That's all you have. Follow that, and you'll never have any kind of comprehensive plan development for the city. Running to what a comprehensive plan is, comprehensive plan, as they define it, is not state-enabled legislation, is zoning, is the zoning plan. Well, guess what? Doesn't comply, doesn't comply with comprehensive plan of city of Danbury. That's why I want to change it.
I'm sorry, is it again?
That's why I want to change it.
That's why?
He wants, the applicant wants it changed. Next point was that non-conformity should be reduced through zoning, through rezoning of property. Well, if we did that, we'd do an awful lot of rezoning, wouldn't we? And we'd have spot zoning all over the city. Every place you would find a lot, either because of use, or because of setback, or because of frontage, or because of area. Anytime you find that, what we'd have to do is change the zone, wouldn't we? That's not the way to cure non-conformities. The way to cure a non-conformity in this case would be to get rid of the one use, the one dwelling unit, so it's only a one, a single-family dwelling. But we're not asking that, we're not demanding that. Zoning cannot do that. He is protected as a non-conforming use, to remain as a two-family dwelling. That's not a burden, that's a protection. I made a point about the collector's street. Deer Hill Avenue is maintained, is a collector's street. Well, that's true, but I never brought up Deer Hill Avenue, I never said it when I talked about the street. I said Whitlock is not a collector's street, Whitlock is a little street. Next. Attorney said, Attorney Grogan said, that there is no intent to change the property to a three-family property. My question is, why are we here? Why are we here if that's not the intent? All the other uses, except 1, 2, and 3 family dwellings in R3, all the other uses require a lot size as far in excess under R3 than this lot. So none of them would be eligible. Some of them, indeed, the police station of our house would be a foolish rotation, but nothing is allowed, except 1, 2, and 3's on a lot that's size. But he said, they have no intent to change the three-family, well, he's got a two-family now, and they don't intend to change the three, so I don't know why we're here. There's just no reason, because he can, he can continue forever as a two-family dwelling. Then there was the argument that this is spot zoning. This is not spot zoning. Spot zoning are isolated parcels, it's now isolated, it a bus, other R8, eight properties, it's not spot zoning, that is not an issue. I find the change would bring this property into conformity in terms of use? Yeah, it would, but he's already protected. So would reducing it to a one? Under current, I mean, we're not like, we're not having to regulate it for all of the year. And then he ended up with a very interesting comment. He said, if you make it R3, this makes it easier to do things on the property than if this remains under R8 to do one. It's easier to get a use variance from a ZBA than yard variances. Well, that may be true, but what use variance is he looking for? I think he wants to put in another unit. If this statement is true, he wants to put in another unit. Yeah, it would be easier if you're already R3, you don't have to get a use variance. But if it remains the way it is, he would. So I, again, I don't understand that comment, except that it suggests to me that this is more than one. And so, what I would suggest, does this be denied for the reasons given in my report? It does not comply with plan of conservation and development, R3 zoning, third dwelling in it is not compatible with four budding lots zone R88, which are also non-conforming, and the existing lot size of 13,271 square feet fails to meet the minimum required for all other R3 uses except one, so why are we here? Third, the parcel is not located on a collector or curio street, it's on Whitlock, Whitlock is a local street. And four, the lot fails to meet the required minimum lot frontage or minimum side yard setback for three-family dwelling in R3. That's for three-family dwelling in R3. We should always try not to zone land which is going to require variances from ZBA, you know, or use. So, let's not do it in this case, because what we're doing is we'd be rezoning it on the presumption that the ZBA's going to grant variances. And we're not in control of it. Except, as Attorney Brogan points out, it'll be easier to get variances for lot frontage and inside yards than use variances. But he's already told us, there's no intention to change it to a three-family dwelling. So again, I ask, why are we here? Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Joe? Do you want to try that?
Mr. Albert, even removing speculation of a third dwelling, there's still, your, I mean, there's arguments, I mean, your arguments still hold, as opposed to the, as opposed to the application, even removing the R3, by removing the third family speculation? I mean, if this wasn't even about putting in a third unit?
If this weren't about putting in a third unit, the two units can remain.
Yeah, so, I mean...
Forever. If he wants to expand the building, he may need a variance on lot width or side.
Lot width, 7, 9 feet, very far.
And he could go for that, because he wants to make the building larger, but not add another unit. And as far as I can see, the only reason he could rezone the land, so R3 would be a head unit. I can see.
Any additional questions for you, Joe? Thank you. For now, Attorney Brogan?
I don't know, it's clear with all of, I think, there is something that I neglected to...
I'm sorry, sir, even only about what was offered as we, as opposition can't...
Well, that's what I'm going to do. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. But Mr. Albert asked the question, why? And I think you have to, I referenced it, but I didn't reference a specific section that I was talking about. And I think that if you look at Section 9C2, on page 9-2 of the regulation, it says, "No non-conforming use shall be extended or expanded." And that was what I was really referring to. And you can get, it's not that difficult to get, if you're in a non-conforming situation, which is, that is too... Sorry, go back. Go back. I had indicated before. But if he wants to expand the size of it and upgrade the apartments, not two, three-family, but two-family, and expand them and make it a better building, he's got to get a use variance, and it's prohibited. He's got a problem, and it is a significant problem. And that can be eliminated, I think, by, and that's the reason, he asked, Mr. Albert has the reason? That's the reason.
I just want to follow up real quick on that. Normally I like to interrupt, but just kind of curious and wondering, like, even if we did grant the zoning change, and he was looking to make the building larger, like you said, that would still encroach on setbacks, so wouldn't he still not have to go to ZBA to get the variances? And therefore, would that still not be an extension of a non-conforming, because of the, maybe not use, but it still be non-conforming for land size?
But they're permitted to grant that, whether, it's an ordinance, prohibition, so we can use that. I think that's a reasonable request. As to the other issues, I certainly don't disrespect the plan of conservation and development, but I do understand that it's a reasonable demand. I don't think, especially in this circumstance, raises to that level of concern. But I certainly don't disrespect the plan of conservation at all, and I understand that. I just want to point out that the other issue here, which is again, as I said before, known for you, is the plan, the comprehensive plan, and there is no violation of that. In fact, this is, this is, I think, recommended in that, that if we can eliminate...
That's not a change.
Again, I think that's, that's really, I'm ready to say. Thank you, Gary.
Do we have additional questions for Attorney, uh, Mr. Goebbels?
Yeah, very quickly, how big's the house? What's square footage of the house on there now?
24.
24 square feet.
24 square feet, please, I'd like to hear it.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, can I show you?
How large are the apartments? In other words, how many bedrooms does each apartment have?
Do you have any questions?
Yes. It's a three-bedroom, not four-bedroom.
Just to clarify, the setback being irrelevant, I'm gonna allow it, because you did mention the idea of possibly extending the size of it, but normally that would be... Or to the petition to add the zoning change.
Additional questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment regarding, regarding Section 9C2, A to B. A specifically, no non-conforming use shall be extended or expanded, or B, no non-conforming structure may be extended or expanded in such a way that the non-conformity of the structure is increased. Commission members, that's, those are our regulations. That's to tell us what we can do and what we cannot do. That doesn't mean that a petitioner with a valid hardship couldn't go to the zoning board of appeals and seek that. So what Attorney Brogan was saying was, he pointed this out as an argument. That's an argument for us not to allow that to take place, but certainly the petitioner would go on a hardship and, and, and relieve.
I'd have to find it on Mr. Hatzin, but I think there's a common limitation against common ZBA with regard to use variances. I don't have it right now. When I send you the details on the restrictions, I'll try to provide that also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Additional questions? That's okay, thank you.
More regulations? Yes, answer my question. Your query is to, the last would be 2, A, it says, no use variance shall be granted by the zoning board for this particular parcel, located within an R8, R820, R840, or R820. That's lovely.
So what does, specifically, what does that mean, if this petition was granted or not granted? It means that no variance shall be granted by the zoning board of appeals for any parcel located within R8, R820, R840, or R820 use variances?
If it stays in the R8, it can't be that way?
It says R3 is a variance.
But it is already stated that there's no intention to, I mean, what state of that, what intent? There is no intent to change a three-family lot. Which is a B use.
Okay. Do we listen to the panel's public hearing?
Did you ask for additional information?
Yes, my question, do we want to continue subject to receipt, or do we just want to continue? Mr. Hatzin?
I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing specifically and exclusively for receipt of, I guess, two documents. One was the portable land use restriction agreement, and we will submit it to...
I have to answer what Albert answered the question.
Thank you.
Continue the public hearing to receive and discuss, or does we see the...
I'd like to make a motion to receive and discuss.
Do you want him to share the office? So you can see ahead of time if you have a chance to...
It would be helpful, probably, to receive that and have a possible level of press confirmation at the meeting.
We'll have that in the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to continue the public hearing to receive and discuss the land use restriction agreement. We have a second, second, I think, Mr. Estefan, discussion. All in favor, sign up and say aye. If it's closed, okay, this public hearing will be continued to our next meeting. There is nothing of the old business, there's nothing of the new business, there are no other matters, there is no correspondence. So unless we have anything else, anything before us, I'll entertain a motion.
Just a reminder, because there's people here, that this one's continued, our next meeting is June 12th.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, if I can, Mr. Estefan, if I can, Mr. Javi, discussion, all in favor, say aye. If it's closed, adjourn.